I call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. I believe we have a remote electronic attendance necessary.
Yes, your honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Fifth Ward Alderman Sam Moyer.
Second.
Right, motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Your honor.
Roll call?
Oh, yes, we have to do all roll call, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
Alright, that motion passes. Welcome Alderman Moyer. We'll try to remember to look for your hand raised if you want to speak. Uh, we do have a proclamation tonight, a request by women impacting public policy on the Small Business Saturday Coalition to proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday. The proclamation reads as, whereas the government of Moline, Illinois celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 billion small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and responsible for 65.1% of net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small business is, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of US consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas, 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas, Moline, Illinois supports local businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and preserve communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday. Thank you very much. Um, is, is there public comment?
Yes, your honor, I have three that were emailed. The first is from Tony Carpita, Moline, um, business owner. And he says, "As a business owner in Moline, I support the levy reduction. I believe this needs to be done to make Moline more competitive to surrounding areas. Too many businesses and residents are leaving Illinois." The second one is from Scott Christian Benson. "City Council, I would like to voice my concern with the city's recent discussions of unnecessarily raising the tax levy in Moline. It's my understanding by reading recent posted information that the city is sitting on reserves higher than its own policies allow for. If that is the case, it seems that if we would be, that it, it would be hard for the city council to justify an unnecessary increase at this time. As a Moline homeowner, business owner, and commercial property owner, I always like to see money continuously invested into improvements in our community, but please spend it wisely and more importantly, only take it from us when it is necessary. These challenging times on this side of the river specifically, and every dime counts. It seems that the city's own policies should be adhered to, and the unnecessary tax increase should be avoided at this time." And the last is from Ken and Julie Bailey, um, owners of Rascals. "Good evening, council members. We would like to show our support in the proposed amended motion for the 2022 property tax levy ordinance to lower the levy by $500,000 instead of the originally proposed increase, the $147,521. We feel that after the past 20 months of hardship caused by the pandemic, this would be a fair and optimal time to give some financial relief to the Moline taxpayers. For the 34 years we have operated our business in Moline, we have received at least minimum tax increases most years, and although this is a minimum savings, it is better than yet another compounded increase. This seems like an appropriate time to offer some needed financial relief." And that is all I have. Thank you.
Any questions on the agenda? I think we move to agenda items. Number one, 2022 property tax.
Thank you, your honor. The ordinance before you tonight seeks approval to request the county clerk to not extend property taxes for payment of principal and interest on the city's bonds in 2022, with the exception of the 2021 C Series Pension Obligation Bonds. The pension obligation bond will require a levy of taxes which are projected in the amount of $5,978,421. The city will use existing revenues for the payment of all other bond payments in the amount of $4.3 million. Staff seeks approval of this ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Who was that? Thank you. Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's. That motion passes. Number two, 2022 budget appropriation.
Thank you, your honor. Um, tonight during the council meeting, we will be holding a public hearing on the 22 budget. And as part of that hearing, we will be discussing the annual appropriations, um, for again, the 2022 budget, which is the ordinance that is in front of you now. Pursuant to the state statute, Illinois municipalities are required to adopt an annual appropriation ordinance, setting forth the funds deemed necessary to pay the city's expenses for the upcoming year. Following three bud- budget work sessions on November the 2nd, council authorized staff to publish the 22 appropriations in the amount of $146,897, or $879,082. After the publication on November 5th, the council then reduced the property tax levy by $647,521 on November 9th. In response to lowering the levy, the council also needs to amend the appropriations as published um, by the $647,521 to allow for a transfer of funds from the general fund to the parks budget in order, in order to balance the budget. Total authorized appropriations need to, needed to balance the budget, total $147,544,603, which is up to $647,521 from the amount that was published. Staff seeks an amendment to the city's 2022 total appropriations as published to balance the budget and prior to the first reading of the ordinance, which is before you tonight. Amending and adopting the ordinance allows the city to extend funds authorized by the city council during the calendar year of 2022. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I'll move to, uh, uh, adopt the staff's recommendation for the amendment, um, to the published, uh, material.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian.
Your honor, if we could first get a motion and second on the item on the agenda, and then I think Alderman Schmidt has an amendment.
Well, but the amendment that-
He just did.
What he just did takes care of both at once. I think-
To accept, accept staff's recommendation.
Is that okay, Margaret?
Two separate ones.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor is as amended-
Yep.
Or recommended by staff.
Okay.
Got it. So that was motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
That motion passes. Number three, an addendum for Professional Engineering Services with Gewalt Hamilton Associates, Inc., 16th Street Corridor.
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the, uh, Public Works Department and Engineering Department is requesting authorization to expend up to, not to exceed $24,700 for Gewalt Hamilton to actually do a study of the 16th, 16th Street corridor between Avenue of the Cities and John Deere Road for a potential road diet in accordance with the, uh, complete streets policy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Mr. Went?
Uh, yeah, I've got a question. I, I think Joe's on this, and I apologize for not getting, uh, to you on this sooner. Is the, um, contract we currently have, are they also analyzing 16th Street from Avenue of the Cities to 19th already?
Hello, Mr. Went, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, 16th Street and Avenue of the Cities, they're, uh, um, I believe they're redesigning that intersection, and they're also designing a, a traffic intersection at 39th Street, 36th or 39th Street as well on 16th, or 36th or 39th Avenue on 16th Street. So this is just, it's in that corridor where they're already working, so we, uh, we talked about, uh, looking at this a little bit further.
Uh, but, but my, my question is, heading north from Avenue of the Cities to 19th, are they also looking at, uh, I just, my, my concern is if we're only looking at Avenue of the Cities south, we should be looking at least up to, to 19th and probably actually east and west on, on Avenue of the Cities if we're going to be redesigning that, um, that intersection. Because if you wind up doing a road diet, clearly that will change what you're going to wind up doing at that intersection if you only got three lanes coming into it rather than four. So what's the current scope of, of the contract with them? Is it only for that intersection? Or is it that intersection north to 19th Avenue?
It is only that intersection. So going north to 19th Avenue is already kind of part of that because there's no, there's, we're studying that traffic with, with that scope. So it, it does kind of go that way. Uh, the continuing the road diet to 19th Avenue is something we're, we're already kind of looking at, but, um, you know, that's such a busy intersection. We're going to look at their recommendations once they get their traffic, or their design study done at that intersection. So this just continues it. Um, we're not talking about those studying 19th Avenue at this time because that, it seems like a good, uh, uh, termini there somewhere along that corridor between 16th and 19th Avenue, um, whether it's Browning Park or, or wherever they see it, see it fit. So, so there, there, there is already kind of looking at that portion of that, uh, of that corridor currently.
Okay. Mr. Went?
Uh, I, I, I support expanding this, but I, I would, I would like us to, and, and I'll vote to, to, to do this, but could we then ask them what it would look like for us to expand it even further, taking up to 19th, um, along 16th Street all the way to 19th Avenue, as well as, uh, Avenue of the Cities, both to the east and west of, of that intersection? I, I think that we'll come out with a, uh, better result if we're studying everything that's feeding into that intersection and maybe come back with, uh, um, a subsequent, uh, suggestion on the expanding of the, the contract to include those areas.
Yeah, yeah, we could certainly look at that. And then also in 2022, we have a Avenue of the Cities corridors study engineering plan. So, um, we'll, we'll look at how that maybe could tie into it and, and make sure that we, we coordinate those, uh, whether it's the same company or not. But, um, but this is definitely something that's supposed to tie into, to that study as well. So, so they will coordinate that way.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll ensure that from 19th Avenue at least to Avenue of Cities is included. I'm certain it is because that's, that's part of that original, um, yeah, um, intersection design study.
Okay. I, I, I just want to make sure that we, we don't wind up in a situation where we rebuild an intersection, and then we get a, a study of the Avenue of the Cities, and they come in and be like, "Oh, well, you should have narrowed all of this up too. You've got, you only needed three lanes here, or you needed five lanes here, and now that intersection doesn't work with the rest of the system anymore." So, uh, yeah, if you could come back with that, that would be terrific.
Yeah, absolutely. We're aware of that.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. Uh, can we hit a roll call, please?
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
Thank you. Number four, Van Acker's First Edition Annexation.
Your honor, members of council, before you tonight is a project that the staff have been working on for probably greater than six months. Uh, it is the annexation of three parcels of land located on, I believe it was 7th Street. It is property that is currently owned by Chris Bowling of CK BP LLC. Uh, previously, we have been working with the, with RSS Investments LLC, and the new, of course, and the new owners. The three parcels in question, two of them are vacant parcels, and one of them has an existing, uh, warehouse building on it that is vacant at the present time. They are requesting, uh, annexation to the city. They have extended, uh, extended utilities on their property to connect to the city's system subject to the annexation taking place. That was a condition of the discussions past several, past five months, actually. So we're looking forward to bringing forward the ordinance, uh, the 30th, the annexation ordinance, as well as the annexation agreement. They are going to be looking for, um, uh, I think it's I-1 zoning for this property, uh, based upon the existing use that is there, and the staff recommends approval of, uh, the annexation, uh, going forward.
Move to approve the annexation?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien.
Quick on the draw over there.
New utility customer.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Do we have the Plan Commission's recommendation?
Yeah, I believe we do, and I believe they did approve, it was just this the other day.
Well, and that's why it was asked as tomorrow's report, so I just wanted-
Exactly, yes.
They held their hearing, and they have recommended.
Approval.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good question. Anything else?
I, I'd just like to make a comment. I used to live at 4308 7th Street before 52nd was there, before anything was there. There was no, uh, Hy-Vee, there was no nothing. It was Albert Van Acker's addition, and Albert Van Acker lived across the street from me, so. And those houses that were there were transferred from where I-74 Bridge went in, currently, uh, I don't know, 1971, '72? I lived in one of those houses. The floor was all wobbly. But a, a question I had is, uh, this, this area is probably going to be developed, and I guess we don't talk much about wetlands anymore in Moline. We used to when I was here before. And I think a lot of that property, this isn't, I mean, these are developed lot, they've already been developed. But in the future, I mean, is this, does the planning commission, I mean, is that ever, and this is my own fault for not knowing this, but does planning, do they, is this ever discussed? Because that was an issue years ago. They tried to put a, I guess, an industrial park out by Barstone. That was considered wetland, so it ended up not going in there. But I guess that's something that, I mean, how does that, uh, work? Does that something that the state provides this information on, or federal government, or?
Do you want to interact?
You can say it if you want.
So, uh, you may be aware that, that there are changes to the floodways map that are occurring right now. And, um, that's going to impact development along the river. And, um, so I think the answer to your question is it remains to be seen. But if you'd like that message to the Plan Commission to be shared, you know, or that you want information on when do they discuss the impact to wetlands, or how is that take, we can certainly ask Sean to bring back some information about that.
Like I said, it was a long time ago when I lived down there, but water used to surround, I mean, it would cover the road down there.
Yep.
Uh, in the spring. It was not uncommon for, probably still, well, North Shore Drive, I mean, you know the situation there. Anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you. Anything else?
We'd be grateful for that information.
So, this, because there's the two ordinances. This one is just approving the annexation followed by setting the zoning. Because we just talked, okay, so I have, of course, I have more questions when we get to this topic.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
So this is consideration of the annexation itself, of, of the plan of annexation.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
That motion passes. Van Acker's First Edition Rezoning, number five, Mr. Vitas.
And again, following up to the, to the previous item, this would be for, uh, for the zoning and land, and of course with the zoning and land development ordinance, uh, bringing these three parcels, uh, forward for rezoning in the I-1 classification, which is what the petitioner is looking for. The petitioner's attorney represents him is also here this evening if there's questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
So I thought the, the ordinance was delivered to council, and it is in the cow is for, not for I-1 zoning.
I believe it's the, the, uh, the, the O-1 Office District, or ORT Office slash Research Park and Tech. And petitioner is not in agreement with that, as a matter of record. And I believe the annexation agreement does spell out the desire for the I-1.
Oh, sorry, then, then let me clarify, uh, that my motion was to, uh, zone it as I-1.
As I-1.
And I- I agree with that as a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then would, would the Plan Commission have to say?
Uh, I wasn't at the meeting, but Margaret, do you know? Was Sean online?
No. Sean is.
Yes, I'm online.
Thank you, Sean. Can you speak?
Yes, the, the Planning Commission agreed that because of the existing use there, which is a warehouse, it wouldn't be allowed in the ORT, which is a neighboring zoning district adjacent to the west. Even though that does have some light industrial components in it, it doesn't cover the warehouse use. That is why the applicant petitioned to zone it as I-1 light industrial. And they did discuss wetlands, or, uh, the floodplain area, but that mostly had to do with the parcels to the east of there.
And I had the same concerns as the, the owner that, that didn't seem to fit. So I, I'm happy with where that is. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone with any further questions? Alright, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
Alright, that motion passes. Number six, Insurance Program Managers Group Policy. Mr. Vitas or Ms. Miller?
We discussed this, and then, uh, I believe Leah is here as well, the net, as well as the, our broker, if I'm not mistaken, correct? We have not met, so I'm just making, I'm assuming that's you behind the mask. So that's John Barrett, the, the producer. Nice to meet you. So before you tonight, um, get to the next page, uh, before you tonight, um, is, uh, requesting authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with USI Insurance for Broker Services for Liability, Property, Workers' Compensation, and Underground Storage Tank, or UST, coverage for a period of one year, commencing on December 1, 2021. And then authorizing the HR director to execute any and all documents in order to bind and accept the coverage with the Insurance Program Managers Group, IPMG, for liability, property, and workers' comp insurance, and underground storage tank insurance with ACE, American Insurance Company, for a period of one year, commencing on December 1, 2021. The fiscal impact is $982,339 in premium that would be paid from various line items in the liability fund. Uh, if there's questions about any of the policies, the team is here. Uh, I will say that the one policy that we have been, uh, working on up literally up until just before this meeting relates to our, uh, cybersecurity insurance. And as you know, uh, that, that is the one that is of greatest interest at this moment. Um, we did receive, uh, today at about 11 o'clock in the morning, uh, proposals for two different policies for cyber insurance, cyber liability coverage. And one was with Tokio, uh, who is our, our current vendor. And then there was also another proposal that we received, I'm trying to find it here, give me a second. I think it was Beasley, if I'm not mistaken. And then in between the time that I discussed this with Leah during the course of the day, we also learned that there were two additional policies, uh, that were brought forward, um, this evening. And, um, one of them is with our former carrier going back several years, and that was Travelers. And then there was another proposal, I believe, uh, I was going to say Tokio, if I'm not mistaken. Our current, our, our current carrier. So that being said, we knew the, uh, these po, this, this policy will expire probably at, at, uh, 11:59, I'm guessing, uh, on November 30th. So we don't have a lot of time to act. And I guess what I'm looking for outside of the approval of what's on the agenda and presented here tonight is also the authorization to go ahead and, uh, work with our broker and with the HR department to make a determination on binding the cybersecurity policy uh, based upon the best available coverage, as well as the best premium cost to the city. We did see a pretty extensive increase being passed on by Tokio initially, um, from our current policy, uh, premium level of $25,844. That was increased up to $61,105 with a reduction in, uh, coverage. That, of course, is not what we're going to recommend. Uh, we did receive the policy from Beasley. Uh, this is an A-rated company by AM Best. As you know, who rates insurance companies, as opposed to the, uh, Tokio Marine Company, which is used in Casualty Company, which is an A++ rated company. Uh, and that does make a difference. So I'm just passing that information on. So at this point, I would need approval tonight, uh, for the items that are presented before you, specifically regarding the, um, liability, property, workers' compensation, underground storage tank coverage first. And then second, I'd be looking for authorization for us to go ahead and, and choose the best policy and then bring it back to be ratified by council, uh, at the meeting on the 6th. Because we do need to bind it before midnight under 30.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the, uh, staff's recommendation for everything except for cyber for this motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, uh, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion?
Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none?
Okay.
That, that's not a question, Mr. Moyer, was it? I couldn't see your hands. Okay. Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
Alright, that motion passes. So to the other item that he's looking for authorization for.
Yeah, I mean, I have the ability to bind up, you know, to approve things up to $25,000. But given the nature of the fact that it's an insurance policy, I would rather have authorization from council to go ahead and do that. We did receive, I don't have the actual quote from Travelers, but I believe if I'm not mistaken, the number was about $16,000 and change. Uh, and, is that correct? That's what I heard before I walked in the door.
Okay, um, if I can do the, the policy premium, it's about $16,000. We're still waiting to hear the progress.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Went?
And are those $3 million?
Uh, no, they are not.
Not any longer.
To one with, what's the, uh, deductible?
Um, it depends on if the average, uh, part of the area, of the area.
And just before we continue, I just, to be clear in our governance, we're really on the number seven and other now at this point, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's why I figured we could chat about it before we-
So the, that's our, um, we have, like, on the rulebook. Would be 15, or, excuse me, so $100,000 for the Tokio Marine policy, and $50,000 for the I-1.
That's the deductible.
The deductible.
What we have is the new policy from three minutes ago. Drop the F I R L as a policy, ten thousand per month from the hundred thousand. That's Tokyo. And then some of the sublimits underneath of all those things. Some of them have gone from a million down to fifty thousand, where we currently have the plan that we've been going on now. We got a million dollars before the COVID, that is going down to fifty thousand. No, a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand. IPMG's policy is a million dollar supplement, just like COVID. Fifty thousand instead of a hundred. But some of the sublimits are different, but they're giving you higher limits on cyber extortion, big thing right now. It was a million dollars there, we were getting seventy-five or fifty, no, a hundred thousand with COVID. So you're saying up nine hundred thousand dollars of that for liability.
For ransomware and?
Uh, the premiums of sixty-five, IPMG is sixteen. You're in the middle of a claim with COVID. And then by that, they, they can't back out. But if we switch from them to IPMG, you don't know if it happens. Municipalities are very difficult with cyber. Uh, any government issues, things that's, that's. Cyber markets have gone, you know, even in the retail manufacturing, we're seeing three hundred percent increases. Coverage from ten million to one million, uh, put out of any money. So it's, it's crazy. You know, they're just, uh, act a lot smarter than most IT people and you're gonna see a lot of coins. And it's gonna continue. Travelers has given us no indication, but are looking at it. They will give us something on Thursday. What we will, you know, what we'd like to present to everybody to, you know, besides, besides the premium, we feel that whatever liability we can get for the city's best interest is what we could look at.
Same brief.
And.
We will have some information for everybody hopefully by Thursday afternoon.
Before I get to you, Mr. Went, could you just clarify how you stated it before? You wanted authorization to choose from these three.
We need, we need to actually bind the policy before midnight on the thirtieth. Meaning that we need to make a choice, make the decision, and then issue the payment. And that's, and if you don't issue the payment, you're not binding anything.
Right.
So.
And can you just?
And we just don't have another meeting before we're going to do it. And it's, you know, it's not the staff's issue. This was really the insurance company's not getting back to us.
Right. I just appreciated how you worded what you were looking for, and I wanted you to repeat that for us. If you were looking for.
Authorization, authorization to, to bind the cyber liability policy prior to November thirtieth at midnight. Uh, you know.
Got to come back and ratify.
And then to have us ratify it.
Bring it back for ratification of council on the December sixth meeting. So moved?
Second.
All right. Motion by Alderman O'Brien, uh, seconded by Alderman Went, and you had, you had had your hand up.
Yeah, wh- while we've got your expertise here, John, um, I appreciate your, your comment to that, um, you're seeing increases. I mean, just with everything that's going on, news and, and everything. What is your gut, uh, the difference or the delta is, um, because we're, we've got a claim? I, I, my assumption is we would have, the, the, the ceiling would have, would have dropped. The, uh, premiums would have increased, uh, either way. But how much do you think the, uh, the current claim that we've got is, is affecting that?
Uh, that's really, really hard to say. Cause I, you know, I've got some very large retail business, very large manufacturers. They've never had a claim. They have everything in place as far as FMA, FCM, MFA, all, everything. And they went from ten million in coverage to no one offering anything but three million and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars up. Had, you know, three hundred percent possible thing.
Yeah.
Well, it's just crazy. Uh, you know, I would think that, uh, Tokyo Marine doesn't like municipalities. They obviously.
Price it up.
Tokyo Marine is a, is a own company of USI and they, we kind of forced it on, uh, because of the fine, no, they wanted it. And we felt that you needed cyber coverage.
We appreciate that.
I think even if you had not had a claim of three million, probably it would come down to a million. Now, sixty-five thousand probably would have been more, but one five, thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
But we're gonna give, you know, we're gonna give four hundred and one thousand dollars back.
Yeah. But the Travelers probably is fairly comparable to it either way.
They would probably give us similar IPMG sublimits of a million dollars, but I don't think they're close in price.
Okay.
I think Traveler would be somewhere in the forty-five, fifty, my brain.
Okay.
I think IPMG's policy, uh, you know, is not as broad as Tokyo's, but it's like, it's going to, I'm asking, uh, Leo, that companies that you really are looking for in a cyber policy, IPMG's got the highest. Advertising, all the things that happen at the claim, won't affect the city as badly as the detail, you know, the reputation there. You aren't gonna lose revenue. They are gonna lose revenue.
Yeah.
That answer, the people aren't gonna buy out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Uh, uh, Mr. Timian and then Mr. Schmidt.
Uh, Bob, do you need authorization, uh, above the twenty-five, uh, for timing sake?
I, I think I should not limit it to the twenty-five because I'm not sure what's coming in by, by Thursday. But just authorization to bind, bind the policy that's in the best interest in terms of those, uh, the liability limits that are available and the deductible.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, amend the motion to, uh, include a maximum of sixty thousand. Does that sound?
That's the Tokyo, whatever the Tokyo. Cover the Tokyo policy, correct?
Second.
All right. Um, motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. It was discussion on creating an upper limit authorization. Hearing none.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Wouldn't we need to set that to the actual number, which is sixty-one, one oh five? I, I guess if you're gonna raise it, raising it to sixty falls short.
That is the actual figure. Sixty-one, one oh five was the proposed per premium from cyber liability from Tokyo Marine.
Then, um, whatever the parliamentary procedure is to amend or to modify my motion.
You can't amend an amendment to an amendment. So you just have to edit that to edit your number, I think. Is that correct?
If we're all okay with it. Then that's what I meant.
Okay.
Any objection to that? I misspoke. Apologies.
Thank you.
Want some clarification?
Looking at the two policies in front of us, is there any chance that you would recommend going to the Tokyo Marine policy?
Here's what I've heard. If we leave Tokyo Marine, we leave for good. We will not be able to go back. They would love for, they would probably prefer, because they don't like municipal clients or school districts or any other governmental entities. They would prefer that. We just disappear. But we are bound with them today, and they're giving us the opportunity to bind again. Of course, at a much greater premium cost. It's like, you know, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars versus I believe it was twenty-five thousand before.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a huge increase. And then there's the, the issue of the reduction in the limits of liability coverage that they're providing. So, you know, you have to weigh that in relationship to what's being offered by Beasley and/or Travelers when they come in. I don't have the information to be able to give you the full explanation, but having been in the insurance industry, I get it. I know what they're doing. So I just wanna see the numbers and I want the authority to be able to bind us so that we don't go on December first without a policy. Cause we're getting attacks all the time. I mean, it happens weekly. There are things always going on that we don't talk about, but they are going on and we're always catching them. So it's important that we have the policy in place.
So any other comments or questions on the amendment to have an upper limit that equals the quote from Tokyo Marine? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight I's, no N's. That motion passes, uh, or that amendment passes. Now we need to, uh, consider the motion to author, of authorization to bind and then ratify this policy. Question, any? We, that's already on the floor, so any other further questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight I's, no N's. That motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We move to our informational video gaming code. Ms. Kostopoulos.
Yes, thank you. I'm in a, go up there. Hey, I think that Bob has more.
I'm so sorry. Uh, well, there's some confusion. Hang on. Is there another other?
Yeah, I believe Carol was going to provide.
Oh, Carol has something.
On our, our boundary.
If I could, I will, I would just like to take a few minutes and walk you through the Moody's credit rating report we got.
And I just have a question, though. Will there be a motion coming out of it?
No.
Then it's under informational, so we'll move to informational and, and start with Carol. Before video gaming.
Cause Bob, yeah.
Oh, wait, can I do that? I can't just shove something in. Informational, so it has to go under other. There just won't be a motion. Okay. Sorry, had to confirm. Go ahead. We are number seven on another, or number eight other.
And my idea, I would like to just take a few minutes and walk you through this. Um, we were very, very pleased to hear the news, as you know, that Moody's credit rating did affirm the city's A1 bond rating this last week. And needless to say, we feel very, very grateful. Bob and I, we spent probably close to an hour and a half the week prior with our, um, financial advisors as well as our underwriters. And we went through a stack of financials that was close to two inches thick for a broad overview. Then following that, I spent another four or five hours with four to five separate analysts. And they dove through the history of the city's financials. They go through the projected, um, three-year budget, um, and all of the tip information. So I feel that they did a very comprehensive review of the city's finances. And so I'd like to just highlight a couple of things in the report if I could. Um, the first thing is, in summary, and you guys can read along with me, um, but Moody's is saying that the city benefits from a strong financial position and significant legal authority to raise revenue. And of course, that is because we are a home middle class city. Reserves further strengthened in 2020, and the city is receiving a significant twenty-one million dollars in the ARCA funding to be used over the next three years. And one of the things they highlight later in the report is although the city is receiving the twenty-one million dollars in ARCA funds, right now, we are not allocating any of it towards operating or to balancing the budget. They know that that could change over the course of the three to four years, but right now, um, we are hoping that that will not be the case. Our credit strength is that we have a broad legal ability again to raise local taxes and fees. We have healthy operating fund balances and liquidity across all governmental funds. Our credit challenges is that we have substantial leverage from debt and pensions with high fixed costs. And that, um, credit challenge is the case whether we issued the bonds or not. Because we had a huge unfunded liability, now it's being crossed over with bonding. They did say that, um, factors that could lead to a future downgrade would be a reduction in fund balance or liquidity. If we turn the page and we look right at the very bottom, I'd like to highlight that they said, "We expect the city's financial position to remain strong, giving significant funding at the ARCA funds and management's detailed financial planning." The fact that we did that three-year budget this year, um, I think really served us well. Because they really dove into it. I know during the budget discussions, we did not go through the three-year plan so much, but the fact that we actually did a line item budget for three years, and they dove through all the line items, one by one. And so they were very pleased by that. They also looked at our fifteen and twenty-year cash flows and all of our tips and how that impacts on the general fund. If you turn to page three, um, that first, second paragraph, they were also very pleased that the council had the foresight to restrict the million dollars of the general fund reserves as a cushion against unexpected increases required for the pension contribution. So again, that's service in the favor and again, appreciate council's support on that. Again, they talk about the three-year budget. They've mentioned it several times throughout their analysis, which is unusual for Moody's. So again, they, I know that they were, um, appreciative of that. And again, I congratulate council on the foresight of doing that. Um, again, they did talk about, uh, while a significant fourteen million dollars could potentially be eligible to replace the lost revenue, the city intends to use the funds for ARCA only for capital projects and various initiatives at this time. Again, they talk about the tips. They were concerned, and I actually followed up with a detailed analysis with one of the analysts. They wanted to see projected out what the impact could be on the general fund with all the cash advances that are loading up. And then I also talked to them that we were in the process of hiring an economic development director and that at some point during the year after that person's hired, we would be coming back to council with some consideration of things on how to possibly reduce that liability to some of those tip funds. Um, if you take a look at the debt structure, that was another thing that was very positive. And I'm, I'm very thankful for, uh, Spirit Financial's guidance on that. The way that we structured the bonds with level debt service and with no capitalized interest and the fact that we are funding a hundred percent of the liability up to two thousand and forty absolutely, um, looked in our favor, from Moody's perspective. And then lastly, on page four, they did, um, briefly on the OPEC, they went through this in detail with the analysts. Um, but they said that the OPEC obligations are not a significant credit risk for the city at this time. And the OPEC costs in 2020 were low at about two percent of the city's operating revenue. So they were pleased with that.
Our OPEC liability is up to fifteen? Is that right?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, with the new numbers that came out. Yep.
Wasn't it just a couple of years ago, ten?
No, it's, it is, it's, it's climbing. It's just based on, it's based on the age, the average of, you know, our workforce and the number of retirees that are still on the plan and.
I, I.
Actuarial.
Yeah, I mean, that, that concerns me if, you know, it's increased by fifty percent and I think that's maybe two or three years ago that it was at ten?
So our percentage, the way we look at it, we were trying, we were working on that twenty-three up to twenty-six percent. Um, and then with interest revenue being down, we aren't making a lot of ground. But in the three-year budget, and I didn't get a chance to share that with you, we are increasing, I think our funding had been slightly under a half a million. And over the three-year period, we were trying to boost it up to seven hundred thousand dollars, um, if we're able to. And Moody's was, was pleased with those numbers.
Okay.
But we're making headway.
I, 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 I would love for us to get some kind of plan in place because if it's, if it's increasing at that geometric rate, that could be a, a real, uh, issue that could, uh, come up. I mean, we, we may have come with a, with some kind of solution for, uh, pension to get us through some savings, but that's, uh, that's scary.
The difference is, is that we have good tax reserves in that fund. And like Moody's, they do not look at that as a high credit risk right now, based on the percentage of revenues that flow in and out of that fund.
Cause we're at like, like three or four million in, in that fund?
Yes.
Alright, thanks.
And then lastly, um, if we look at the governance, um, the governance of the city is strong, evidenced by management's ability to maintain healthy fund balance and liquidity. And the fact that the city, number one, that we adopted a fund balance policy. We didn't have a fund box balance policy to share with Moody's, um, two years ago. Very pleased that we have the policy and that we have had strict, um, adherence to that. So some very, very good information. And then just a real quick update on the sale tomorrow, um, the difference is, is we have interest. And I'm gonna say interest, interest in negotiated buyers, um, looking at our bonds. So.
Good, that's good.
So.
Kind of our reading.
No, but I mean, it's, it's just always a concern with that amount and whatnot. So we do have interest in buyers. And I do want to let the council know that with the inflation numbers that came out recently, that bid impact mark. The things right now have shifted up a little bit, but we are still very hopeful that we are going to be under 3% on our pension obligation bonds. If it would have been today, I think we would have hit 2.85%. We'll see what tomorrow brings. Right out of the chute, 7:00 AM in the morning, um, they've got several interested buyers right now, and hopefully we'll get bids for them all. On the pool issue, um, we are actually hopeful that those interest rates, again, those are actual exempt bonds, that it will come under 2%. And originally, we thought it could be 2.2. We do so, again, we'll see that, and as soon as we get the bid tabs tomorrow, I'm going to send that out. And then just as a reminder, that the ordinance that was adopted on November 9th does give authority to the mayor to authorize, um, the signature for the purchase agreement. If the bids come in under the 3.5%, which we are confident that they will. But prior to signing that purchase agreement, again, I'm going to share all the bid tabs with everyone. Um, make sure that we're all in consensus and happy with the bids, and, um, hopefully we'll have a very successful sales call.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I believe we have one more other item. Mr. Vita.
Yes, i- if I could, just, uh, mayor and members of council. Um, as you know, we've been working diligently to try and fill vacancies. And the challenge that that presents can be overwhelming. Uh, we don't have a very large HR department, as you well know. Uh, I believe we're one short, as I speak, one, one position short. During the past several months, we have worked tirelessly to find people to fill certain positions. One being the community and economic development director position, you know. Our efforts led to a candidate who, as you know, decided to stay where they were at and work remotely full-time and spend more time with family, uh, which is, which is a big challenge. And we did have other people lined up for the, uh, for the zoning position. And, um, and then the planner, of course, we were successful in hiring, but we can't fill them all. Uh, it, we just don't have the resources internally to chase down all these people and all these leads. We also have a budget that's about to be adopted, and it has a very fairly aggressive calendar of events for 2022, in terms of all the capital improvement programs and projects that are slated to be done. And, and we need people on board. We really truly need people on board. And, and, uh, I can say that if, if we can get people on board, we should be able to advance our calendar. As you know, I want to put out a, uh, an action plan, a work plan. It's really a performance plan. And we want to get that out by the first of the year, and I need time to really focus on that and work with staff to get that done. So the challenge is, is being pulled in many, many different directions, and an HR department that is racing to try and just fill positions to, you know, fill our snowplows this winter even. And those interviews have been going on and on, and, and we're hoping we can fill, you know, the eight vacancies that are there. There's two existing vacancies and six new positions, and the interviews are taking place, and, and there's an interest. But this all takes time, which means we can't dedicate time to the key management positions that need to be filled. Alright, cause I mean, that's where the leadership is, and that's where I need the most help. So what I'm proposing we do going forward is, is to work with different recruiting companies, not a recruiter, but different recruiting companies, because I don't want to put all of our eggs in one basket. You know, having sat on the other side of the table and looking for work, you always can see that there's an issue when you see one recruiter and they're advertising three or four jobs for the same city. Red flags pop up everywhere. I mean, that, that's, that's a sure indicator that you, that, that something is going on. So what I want to propose going forward is, is that we work with GovHR to, uh, find us a director of public works position. Um, that position, of course, has been filled on an interim basis for some time now. Uh, and in my conversations, long conversations with Joe, he's well aware of where we're at and where we're going. Um, and I have a puzzle in terms of where Joe fits into the organization, uh, you know, as, as the assistant director of public works, okay? Keeping him there and then working with a seasoned public works director. And eventually, when that director leaves, Joe, of course, being the local gentleman, will, would be well groomed, uh, to actually fit in. He's never had the benefit of having somebody to work with to bring him up in that position. So GovHR, uh, would, would do the search for our director of public works. It takes about three to three and a half months to actually fill that slot, uh, according to them. And the cost is about $22,500. And I will say this, the cost is literally the same from one recruiter to the next. I mean, I think they get together at, you know, at conventions and they share notes and over drinks and say, "This is what our rate will be for next year." Um, as far as the community and economic development director position, I'm going to recommend that we use Strategic Government Resources, SGR. Uh, their cost is $18,500 plus expenses up to and not to exceed $24,900, okay? Uh, the timeline to fill that position is about four months. Uh, and they could start their work, um, I believe in January on the 1st, because they're all booked. All these, all these companies are booked solid. The city engineer position was previously approved by council, and Baker Tilly was given a contract to fill that position. And I'm recommending we, we go ahead and let Baker Tilly do just that. Uh, find an engineer. I've had long conversations with the interim, uh, city engineer who has no interest in filling that position, prefers the technical side of the job, and would prefer to stay right where she's at. And out of respect and deference for her, I would agree. Yes.
I thought we, like, and this isn't you, Bob, but we voted like on that like a year ago, it's like last October or something like that.
It was a long time ago.
Did, I mean, nothing ever moved forward with that, or?
It never really did, no. No, never did. So that, that is out there. They need a timeline of three months, and they would start December 6th. Okay? And then as far as the assistant city administrator position, which was approved a long time ago and funded and budgeted, I'm looking at the company called Municipal Solutions for that. Uh, that cost is $22,500, and they could literally start November 22nd to start advancing this process. Those are the four key positions and key vacancies that sit on the back of the chessboard. Those are the key leadership positions that are missing today. And while these searches are going on, um, we would continue to do the recruiting downstairs for all of the other vacancies. And I believe, Leah, if you can correct me, how many do we have today?
I would have to look up the public just around 25.
Around 25?
Yes.
Okay.
Listen to me.
Yeah, they're busy. So we've got at least other positions throughout the organization that are vacant that we would recruit on our own in-house. And these would be more local hires than anything else, is what they truly are. Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Did I read in your presentation that we have 46?
It was 46 in a snapshot, and you did it, uh, to the word 42, so it's.
He's starting by, we're, we're starting forward.
Okay, that's great. We fired 20 in.
We're steamrolling, steamrolling ahead.
I get, I, I don't have the exact.
Okay, I, I, I. Which actually, now that we've mentioned your presentation, weren't we supposed to have a public, uh, hearing at 6:15?
It can't be any earlier than that, but the plan is to do it as soon as committee, um, committee, the whole meeting is done.
Oh, okay. We just always historically have always done it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So anyhow, that's informational. I, I, I want to share that with you. You know, I, I prefer never to spend this kind of money, but I'm also realizing that we do not have the internal resources to fill the vacancies which were created some time ago. And, uh, and we do need these key people in positions as quickly as we can, uh, given the nature of what we're trying to accomplish in fiscal '22. Uh, I won't, we will not be able to deliver the results. I'm thinking that we would all like them to see achieved, uh, without bringing people and filling, yeah, on board and filling these chairs.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah, could we just, when, when you get a chance, give that, give us a report on what the, the actual number is, just so we can.
Be happy to.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Now we move to you, Ms. Kostopoulos. Our informational video gaming code.
Margaret, it's actually better if you stick that, not the code is better for you.
Oh.
Okay. Sometimes I do better when I stand. It's a thing, like. Okay, so we have a, a little PowerPoint, but to begin with, you know, we have brought a couple of amendments to the gaming ordinance in the past, and they just didn't hit the mark. So we thought, and, and the mayor suggested, we need your input. We've heard from many of you that you are concerned about, you know, making sure that all businesses or more businesses have the opportunity to increase their revenue through gaming enterprises. But we also have, you know, state law, uh, on gaming, state liquor law, and of course, your local ordinances on both. And remember, you have to, to operate video gaming. A business must have a gaming license and a liquor license, which allows them to pour or, or serve. So that are, those are the constraints. And, uh, we thought it would be best to have, you know, a review of what uh, state and local law requires. And then we also have provided what other communities, uh, that we surveyed do in that regard as well. And maybe that could focus us on how you want to amend your ordinance. So to start, we thought that we would review, uh, video gaming state laws, uh, Moline's current regulations, uh, how other municipalities regulate, and then of course, possible amendments. We're also going to add how, uh, enforcement occurs at the end. So to start, uh, state law has some restrictions on where uh, video gaming can occur. So establishments, uh, to receive a license are restricted. Uh, cannot be 1,000 feet or less from a horse racing track. I don't think you have those, though. Um, or a casino again, uh, not, not, uh, here. But more importantly, cannot be within 100 feet of an elementary or secondary, public school, private school, a place of worship. Additionally, there are restrictions limiting video gaming malls. I don't think you have those either. Um, now, those are the state, uh, like a summary of the state gaming restrictions for gaming licenses. Now, an overlay to that is the State Liquor Control Act, which again, remember, you have to have a liquor license to have a gaming license. So in, there are restrictions on liquor licenses, which prohibit, uh, a licensee to operate within 100 feet of a church, a school other than higher institution, a hospital, a home for aged or indigent persons or veterans, uh, their spouses or children, any military or naval station. Again, you don't, well, maybe, well, anyway.
100 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
More than 100.
Um, and then of course, there is some room for exemptions to that, uh, uh, with the local liquor commissioner. Um, now, again, back to video gaming terminals. State law regulates the number of terminals. And as we talked about recently, that number was recently raised to six from five. So any location can have six terminals, except a truck stop, which can have 10. Um, now, again, state law regulates terminal location in an establishment. So restricted areas in, uh, in establishments for video gaming include that they must be located in an area restricted to persons over 21. They must be separated, uh, from any area accessible by minors with some sort of physical barrier, a partition, a gate, the velvet ropes. Um, and that barrier cannot visually obscure the entrance, because of course, state law also requires somebody must monitor the area. Um, they additionally must be placed in, in the area where alcohol is served. Um, maybe separate from the bar or other source, but in that, you know, in that same establishment. Um, it must have seating apart from the video gaming terminal. So the establishment must have seating in addition to where the terminals are. Um, now, you have by ordinance currently, video gaming regulations. Um, of course, you require the POUR license, P-O-U-R, not P-O-O-R, and the, uh, gaming license. Um, so establishments where video gaming is not a principal use, and the number of licenses, and this would be liquor licenses, so you have to have a liquor license in one of these categories to apply for a gaming license. So you could have a Class A, Double A, B, or D to apply for, uh, uh, a video gaming license, which is not used as the principal use of, of business in the establishment. We have here the maximum number of liquor licenses available in those categories. Um, then we have the Class K license, which is, you have authorized by ordinance, five Class K licenses. which are licenses to pour liquor and operate video gaming as the principal use. So five where sale of other goods or food or beverage is actually incidental. These would be your cafes, your video gaming cafes, as we sometimes call that. And by the way, they're all issued. Now, to obviously have a liquor license, there are some distancing requirements, which would then necessarily also apply if you have a gaming license. We call sensitive uses what we talked about before, churches, schools, hospitals, those things. And for Class A, Double A, B, and D, license holders must be one hundred feet between the establishment and the sensitive use. For Class K, it must be three hundred feet. So again, distances from pre-existing sensitive uses are a little bit different. A and B remains at a hundred feet. B is, did I say B? I meant A and Double A, a hundred feet. Class D is one hundred feet. Class B is three hundred feet, as is Class K. So those are, you know, your spacing. In other words, your spacing requirements already set by your liquor code. And again, to operate a video gaming terminal license, the number of terminals at each establishment, as you know, remains at five. The number of licensed video, the number of licenses. So, you know, you can have five terminals, but the number of licenses available by your ordinance is thirty, with the caveat that those who had a license before the ordinance was adopted or amended would not obviously lose their license, as that could create some legal problems. So there are no new licenses currently issued until the number of licensed establishments drops below thirty. And I think that is the crux of your concern. So all the licenses are issued. So what about these new businesses or others who just missed that opportunity? You know, they are also missing out on their share, so to speak, of the revenue generated by gaming. And as you are well aware, people with gaming licenses hang on to them. So that's kind of why we're really here today. How do we address this issue if they don't? Maybe you'll decide that you're comfortable with this.
Ms. Mr. Wang.
So I appreciate the presentation. And I guess, coming from how this evolved, the K licenses used to have B licenses or tavern licenses. And we decided as a council at that time that we really didn't want, because these were proliferating at the time, these dens, which were just basically, it was a cooler, and they got a liquor license, and they basically were just a place for people to go in and gamble. So that's where the K license came up. And so we limited it to five, so we don't want any more of those. As I think at the time, we had eight, now we're down to seven or six or something like that. And the idea was to get it down. So I think, as we chunk this down, I think we need to have a conversation. Is that still the the principle of this council is that we do not want any, you know, I think question number one, we don't want any proliferation more of these gambling dens or places where just basically gambling is the primary reason for them. And from my standpoint, I want to kind of get a feel for you guys. Is that kind of where you guys are feeling, that we don't want any more of that?
Yes, for me, if you're asking me.
Yes. Do I get a kind of a consensus that that's? Yeah, okay.
I was one of the public, members of the public that wrote to you all about. I'm still with you.
But it's related to both issues. So there's the Class K operators, and then there's the rest who, you know, maybe you think that differently.
Well, but that's what I'm getting to, is because currently on this list, let's just talk about B, and then we'll talk about A. A Class B is a tavern. And here is the definition of tavern in our ordinance. Any public place kept, used, maintained, or advertised and held out to the public as a place where sale of alcohol liquors is the principal business carried on, primarily for the consumption on the premises. Pretty clear that the reason for those places is to go in and drink in the establishment. There are one, two, three, four, five, six B licenses that gaming has higher revenues than their liquor. I think by definition, they are not meeting their license today. And I think we've got an issue with enforcement. We also have the same thing with, I think we have four restaurants, where it says Class A restaurants or Class AA restaurants, beer, wine. Only licensee may be issued only to those restaurants as defined in four, one eleven. The sale of alcohol liquor and revenues derived from the sale of alcohol liquor and/or gaming activity at a restaurant shall be incidental to the principal purpose of the sale of food. And we have four on the list that make more from gaming than they do from food. And so I think we have an issue here where, one, we got to determine, are we going to follow our ordinance? And if that's the case, then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, ten current licenses that are not meeting our ordinance. Now, if we need to amend our ordinance because we feel differently, but right now, clear language shows, based on the information that we've been provided, that gaming is neither incidental in the case of the restaurant or for the tavern, that the primary purpose for them is not the consumption of alcohol on premises. And that was an argument I was making for five years, but nobody would actually listen or enforce our ordinance.
So the issue is, well, probably twofold. How do we enforce that, and what is their violation? How do we define that? So really, what I think they're doing is they're operating as a Class K, but they don't have a Class K license.
And that's my point exactly, and that's why I asked about the K to begin with, that if we don't want that, people are using our ordinance and our lack of enforcement to effectively create Ks around town and go against the policy that this council and the last council has clearly articulated to staff.
So.
But they may not, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to, point made, I see three hands up. I would like to just, I think we will get to the enforcement piece. You said that was going to be at the end.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, we'll come back to that comment of yours.
But if that's ten licenses, that needs to be part of this conversation.
Yeah, I know, it's all there. I just want to make sure everybody else has a chance to ask their question. I don't know, was your hand up first, and then Mr. Timmy, and then Mr. Williams?
I don't disagree with the sentiment of what you're saying, where some of these are meeting to that. I do not believe on the incidental one, maybe. But on the other, I don't believe that it being the most successful part of your business means it's not the primary function of your business. I think if all your staff time and your energy and your time and your advertising, your promotions are focused in other components of your business, it's very easy to argue that you are complying with that. The fact that it's less successful than the gaming part is, makes it not necessarily that primary piece. To where I say, if that's where we're going, I think we would need to refine that ordinance to better define those sorts of caps. I don't, I do not read the ordinance the same way you do, particularly on the, and I don't remember which order you read them in. The one that was, the one that was incidental, perhaps, but the other, I did not agree.
Where the sale of alcohol liquor is the principal business carried on.
That's.
And I'm saying there are ways to define principal business other than revenue. And were I making that argument myself, that's exactly what I would say. And the fact that I'm less successful in my principal business than I am in my side business is not necessarily something we can find, unless we define it that way. That is my perspective.
Right, so we do offer some, you know, other, how other communities have dealt with that at the end. So, and I agree, one thing you may want to amend here is a better definition of incidental or primary or principal, just for transparency to the public, so they know what their license really means, as well as enforcement.
Mr. Timmy.
That was my question, too, is like, how much wiggle room there is around primary purpose? You know, a movie theater makes all their money from refreshments, for example, but their primary business is movies, right? And you could argue that about gas stations as well. But, so I just, clearly, I think if there's this ambiguity, then we need some sort of really strict definition. Secondarily, if this is a effect of a COVID pandemic, I wonder if there needs to be some sort of like year-over-year analysis versus a one-time year. I'm just kind of throwing thoughts out, I'm not suggesting one thing or the other, but if one year your revenues in gaming are higher, but surrounding years they're not, that's a different situation than a consistent violation.
Right, and of course, month to month, they could vary. But to that point, we did gather our, much of our survey results off the State Gaming Board website, and we actually took out the pandemic years. Now, I think the information that Janine passed out to you that may be pandemic years included. So what was in my memo and on this PowerPoint would exclude pandemic.
Yeah, Margaret, this is year-to-date, this is provided by Keith in our finance department, year-to-date, so that was through September.
Okay, so. How it might be skewed by the pandemic, we just don't know.
Twenty twenty-one's a different game.
Yeah. Mr. Williams.
Just from a sense of fairness, and I know the bars up on Seventh Street in my ward, that they're small neighborhood bars that were probably not making a whole lot of money anyhow. And then the state came in and said, well, you can have a few devices. And we don't even give them the max six devices, we only give them five. And they basically saved their business. You know, they brought a revenue stream in that they really, really needed. So to now say, because we defined taverns or bars to be this, it's changed. It's changed around them, not because they changed it, because the state did. And now to penalize them or to come in and to enforce something on them, what it's actually was a godsend. I think we should support it best we can. And I agree, I don't like to see the cafes and the standalone video gaming devices, but the taverns that took advantage of this to help save their business, a sense of fair play should come in, and we should support their efforts.
Ms. Wang, you had a hand?
Well, I'll wait, because I think it may fit in.
Just a thought I had after Oliver Williams' statement was an option for definition might be about square footage dedicated to gaming versus alcohol, for example. Because these video gaming dens, that's their full square footage, whereas this neighborhood bar probably just has a few machines. And that is a definition of purpose, I think. Just a thought.
The concern is then they'll just shove them all into a corner, and then have coolers. That's my concern, I mean, I can envision one of these little dens, they just all then put them together and then.
Or they get a warehouse.
Yeah.
Continue with your presentation, thank you.
So, you know, other liquor license regulations also regulate signage or advertising. The one where they go through that much. Only to say that after January first, twenty twenty-three, there will be a restriction on K licenses to one sign that identifies the name of the establishment. So naturally, you don't want the big feather signs or, you know, all of that, which people find sometimes be offensive or, you know, not what you envision, you're especially, you're downtown to a liquor line. So here are the results of our survey. These are the communities that we looked at. We kind of went around the state. We, and then on this screen, you'll see what their relationship is to Moline. So if there are same number of terminals, similar revenue, similar size, geographic location, so these are the comparables that we used. Here is the, this, I'm not really sure this is a great screen, but what this will show you is the community, the number of establishments, the number of terminals, not in each establishment, obviously, but overall. And there would be the number of terminals registered with the gaming board for the time period that we looked at, which again, excludes the pandemic and the revenues reported to the state. So that gives you a little snapshot. Springfield and Decatur are doing quite well, as is Champaign. So this also shows the. So this also shows the uh. The maximum number of video gaming establishments in these communities. TBD means where we were not able to obtain information. Unfortunately, East Moline just never got back to us. Maybe some of you actually know that number, but we were not able to gather that. And by the way, this is all in your memo.
Can you go back to that real quick? So if I'm reading that right, basically, assuming Spring, because I think Springfield, they just, they got them everywhere. I think they're one of the, they, so my guess is they don't have a limitation, and I'm not sure about East Moline. But Pecan's got no, Alton's got no limit, Galena's got no limit, Champagne and Decatur, I think are similar to us. The the twenty-three and the twenty are just their K, and they've got no limit for anything else.
Right, correct.
So then the the majority of them don't have a limit for other things. We would be closer to that, Moline would be limit of five plus the limit of thirty on on top of that.
So now we're looking at what other communities have done to. Define what is principal use or incidental use. So, for instance, champagne uh will describe principal uses. Fifty percent or more of its gross revenue from video gaming. In Rock Island, it's again proceeds from video gaming secondary. To alcohol and food, so it has to be less than fifty percent of total revenue. Um, other, Decatur uses a definition similar to ours. Just says primary purpose is the, um, and this would be where. Video gaming uh is primary and um. Like your class K. So primary purpose is operate video gaming. Um, and sale of food and snacks is only incidental. So that would be very similar to your class K. Moline, we have in your class K. Principal purpose is operation of video gaming terminals. And sale of liquor and or food shall be incidental. Now, our advice obviously is to better define incidental. And possibly primary purpose or principal purpose. Your neighbor in Geneseo restricts. That the major focus is video gaming. Uh, service of alcohol and food is secondary. Some like champagne use a multi-factor criteria. I think some of you were already thinking about this, so. Seating area space, absence of a full service kitchen, the size. Um, that would be what a video gaming parlor would be. Other multi or other factors would be the layout and design. The uh creation and operation of a commercial kitchen. Uh, then number of video gaming machines relative to uh seating capacity. So those are ways to better define other than just revenue. My concern about revenue is that on a month to month basis. You could have some fluctuation.
I I understand, and and that's why I don't think you you would ever say, well, you missed by one mo- I mean, you would do like a twelve-month average or. At the end of the year to to make a determination. We've gone through some of these, like, that's how we wound up with the chili bowl. Was that we said, oh, you you gotta have a uh commercial kitchen here. And so they installed a commercial kitchen there, so they could get a um. A restaurant license, because they couldn't be within uh three hundred feet because of the church. And so they installed it and then plugged in a crackpot and said, hey, this is our restaurant. Um, and so, and and to square foot, I mean. They will do whatever they need to do to obfuscate what we're trying to to do here. And that's why, and 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 I appreciate uh needing to be clear, um, but um. I I I guess I I'd like to speak out against trying to be too fancy for ourselves. Revenue is, you know, why you're in business, I I understand the idea of like, well, if I'm not really good at it, but I'm making all my money over here. Well, if that's what's paying your bills, that's what's paying your rent, and that's the reason you're still there. And so I I think that we need to to be uh diligent on what we're talking about here and be clear. And 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 if that's not what we wanna do here and allow them to be, then we need to be honest with it. And write the ordinance that allows for whatever we want to be allowed and just make it clear. Cause it's, quite honestly, if that's the case, it's not fair to staff to say, you need to enforce this, but it's not clear what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, for enforcement, transparency and um just clarity in your ordinance. I think that you should expand those definitions, but you are right. It is clearly a policy decision. There are some others, uh other factors, square footage devoted to. The uh gaming uh versus the square footage to non-gaming. Um, areas, the obviously the source of revenue, number of employees. And Geneseo threw in that, you know, any other relevant factor. So, again, for uh survey purposes. Here are the number of terminals in our communities that we surveyed. As you can see, most are at six. But again, many of those have no limit on licenses. So if that is your balance, then. Uh, this information might be helpful. Uh, distances from sensitive uses. Uh, we are the most restrictive. As you can see, most um are at one hundred feet. Couple are at two hundred feet, we're at one hundred feet or three hundred feet. Spacing requirements, and by that we mean. How far apart the terminals have to be, only Decatur has a spacing requirement.
In your memo, it's, I'm sorry.
The space between the establishments?
It says establishments in the memo, but you meant terminals?
Like, so, uh, if I have two terminals in my restaurant, they have to.
So, um, these are, this is just a lot of information to spark your discussion. To talk about uh the key components here. Uh, do you want to address the number of licenses? Do you want to place any additional restrictions on obtaining? Those or using those licenses in terms of spacing? Do you want additional restrictions on um the class K? And then do you want to address the enforcement issue? And again, the easiest way, and you could do this today, is for those who. Whose revenue from gaming far exceeds their other sources. We could uh require them to attend a hearing. On either suspension or revocation of their license. Because they are operating as a class K without a class K license. I agree, there is a lot of vagueness in your current ordinance. Which might not really notify business operators of their obligation. But that is your enforcement remedy currently.
You you had your hand up, Mister Went?
Well, I was gonna ask something else until shared the enforcement, I think that's absurd. But uh Bob, you're kinda sharp, been around for a while. Pull out your uh crystal ball and tell us what you think, ten fifteen years down the line, where we are with gaming with this uh. Government that's addicted to this, obviously likes it, where you see.
Which government's addicted to it?
Illinois, Illinois. And where you see these kind of devices ending up, or do you see growth, or do you see it shrinking back?
If I had to predict the future. Looking at the current generations, I mean, they're big gamers. I mean, they are serious gamers, I mean, uh, there's like two, three generations of people who just thrive on games. I mean, not necessarily gambling games, because they're still young and don't have resources, a lot of them. But as they develop their resources and they are gamers, I can't imagine that you're going to see gaming disappear, it's been around forever. I mean, games of chance have gone, were gone on in Roman times, right, in Greek times, I mean, it's uh Egyptian times, I mean. Gaming has been here and will always be here, so now, I think that it will just continue to continue as it is. And it'll continue to be a question, a debate, a regulation and enforcement, and, you know, it'll vary from community to community, state to state.
The other item that is similar or related to crystal ball is. If if you open up the floodgates, will it dilute the the revenue of the hole? And I don't know if there are other cities who have done that and we could find out that data, but, you know, in terms of help. This being a pathway to a business staying afloat, I wonder what dilution would do to to them. But in any case, I saw some other hands.
Can you go back to that that slide?
The number of establishments.
Number of establishments in the revenue?
Yeah, there was a correlation.
Yeah, I I was gonna say, the more you had, the more revenue.
Mister Macias?
If I could make a point to the future, I mean, you can't go watch a football game or any sporting event on TV. Without being bombarded with app uh gambling on an app. Yeah, I mean, it makes me wanna gamble, my wife tells me, oh, that looks fun. That that's the future, and people do it all the time with fantasy football, um. I i it's not just the establishments, um, so future-wise, people are gonna be. This is playing with their money, whether it's on their phone or at establishments, it's just a reality.
Mister Went?
I I wanna chunk this down because I I I I agree with you, um. I think first what we need to do is, based on our conversation, I would like to direct staff to come back to us. In, how long do you think it'll take to come back with, to clarify what is incidental and what is primary? And then we can have a debate here on, is that fifty percent, is that sixty percent or whatever, and we can actually have a discussion. But clarify that, how long do you think that would take for you to come back with a?
So what are you looking for?
Well, I I I I will make the motion to come back with it at fifty percent being the threshold, and then we can debate it when it comes. Uh, that fifty percent being the threshold for both incidental and primary purpose for uh. Um, a tavern and for a restaurant.
Is, are you making a motion then?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to direct staff to come back with.
Just to make sure I'm clear, you would like to know. How many of our businesses do that?
He wants the definition of incidental and uh primary to reflect what that means if. The the threshold for that, either of those options is fifty percent, much like you showed us the slide for Rock Island, I believe it is. And possibly Champagne's, I was gonna say that.
Maybe we come back at thirty percent, maybe we come at seventy percent, but I I'd like you to write it at fifty percent, and then we can have an actual discussion. Based on what you bring back to make a determination on our ordinance on how we're defining those things. I think that that's the first thing we need to do.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second, Moira.
Thank you, Mister Moore, I can't see you at the moment, appreciate you speaking up, discussion, yes, Mister Went?
Yeah, the the reason I think that we need to do this, I mean, we may not adopt it, but I think that it gives us a discussion point. And if we decide that we want it to be zero percent and want it to be super vague, and we just keep going with whatever what it whatever's doing it. Then we can vote it down, but at least it will give us a framework to have that discussion on what our ordinance is. And how we want to move it forward.
I guess I, you know, I'm I'm not a fan of gaming, these type of uh things being in our. According to uh Mister Williams, it's like saved some of the places on Seventh Street. Uh, but I guess I'm, I I mean, what are we gonna ask these people to do once they? Okay, well, you've gone sixty percent on gaming and you've only done forty percent on food, what's the remedy? I mean, what are we gonna expect these people to do?
You have less machines, you.
Take the machines out, or? I mean, it's like we've created, you, we want you to build a fire, but we don't want the fire to be too hot. Because then you're making too much money.
Currently, your ordinance allows for either a citation. Or a suspension or revocation. If you want to change that, then that would be again part of the amendments.
For for instance, I mean, we've got Ks that are, you know, making, you know, here's here's a K that is making.
We know they're bad.
Yeah, sixty-eight thousand, but but bringing in nothing else. Well, we've got a uh a B license up here that is gaming a hundred and ninety-six, almost a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And has brought in twenty-two thousand dollars in liquor. Is that really just a masked K, or is that really a bar? And and that's where, I I'm not saying fifty percent is the right number. I'm just saying we need to have that discussion, because right now, if the argument is our stuff is too vague. Then there's no reason to have our ordinances anyway, because. Well, yeah, I, but that's why we need to have that conversation, cause otherwise these these could turn into Ks.
While we're discuss, I uh I, I think the place for free flow of ideas is is in our open discussions miscellaneous. I just wanna try to keep it s- or a little orderly here while we're discussing motions. Uh, so, uh, points taken, I will move to Mister Schmidt.
And my my point earlier about the fifty percent was, I I may think fifty percent is the right number, I I honestly have not decided. My point was more on the way it was written and how that went. It it was not as to what what I thought about fifty percent as a number, I think there are a lot of pieces to this, and they're working together. I don't think we should move forward with a proposal only addressing on one of those issues. Because I think all of these pieces touch each other. And I think if we're going to, if we wanna do an ordinance to just see how it sticks. Then we can then turn around and maybe shop around to people and say, I mean, I would even love to get some additional public input. And even input from license holders and from other businesses who want those. So I guess I'm not in favor of putting together that narrow of a motion, but I I do think that we do need to get to something to let us throw darts at that wall. Let's say this is our starting point and the point of conversation.
So do you have an amendment to?
Mister Macias.
I I I have a question. Um with some of these uh businesses that that they the they have their license and we can't do anymore, do they, does that provide a value to that business and do they sell them or do they hold on to them?
Yeah, you can't even transfer it when you move your uh business from one location to another.
Okay, thank you.
Which is another issue. You know, if you had unlimited, then people could move easily, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh yes, Mister Timmy.
Uh Janine, I'm just curious, um I I think I know this, but this is, the gaming is the uh income not inclusive or inclusive of the taxes that they pay. So this is just.
Revenue they reported to the state.
Right, but liquor also is taxed, so.
All right, any further discussion on this motion regarding the definitions at the fifty percent threshold?
But yeah, just asking staff to come back with something that we can.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Nay.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nay.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Five ayes, three nays.
Okay, yes, Miss Christopoulos.
So I would ask for further direction on the number of licenses. Are you looking for that to alter that?
Mister Went.
Yeah, so I I I am coming at this where, and and I think this is how these all kinda come into play is clearly if you wind up uh um restricting what the definition is or enforcing what I think the definition currently is, uh there's a number of places that don't actually meet our would meet our ordinance and our our licensing. And so I think that that, some of these things may wind up correcting itself. But I am a proponent of if we are going to have these in our community. I'm not for the proliferation of having as many as you can at many places and and I'll get to that in a second. But for a new restaurant or uh bar that opens up to be at a competitive disadvantage to those that are already here. Or if they decide, hey, I've got it, I have one and I want to expand and I wanna move to a just a a location just down the street and have a bigger space. But I'm going to lose this revenue because of the this weird Frankenstein ordinance that we've got right now where we limit it and only certain people have it and we're given a a a head start to them. Or if somebody wants to open up a second location that that they they are um um held at a competitive disadvantage. I I think we should go with what the majority of those other places is restrict the 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 dens or the uh the K licenses, but allow for uh the others uh to have um to have them if they want. And what I what I'm going to propose is also an increase in the terminal fee that the uh owner of the terminals uh pay, as well as a fee that the operators will pay. That'll be offset actually by their um their food and uh liquor tax that they pay in. And so I think that we'll let the market actually wind up limiting it a little bit for for those that actually um do this. So that's where I am. I think that we should not have a limit on it.
Mister Timmy.
Uh I I think that if we just took a simpler approach like we do our liquor licenses, where we set a cap and we can raise it as uh we deem appropriate by ordinance. Then it's it it's something we still have power over and uh we're not limited currently by this thirty thing until it goes under. We just kind of make it a uniform system across the board.
So so with your suggestion that we would then have an application uh process, which if somebody wants one, they come, fill one out and then come to council and and ask.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Like you're like a code.
Yes, Mister O'Brien.
How many of those would get turned down?
As many as we want.
Well, it it hasn't worked very well for liquor stores, I can tell you that. Cause I've got a proliferation of them in the east end of the city, so.
For liquor stores?
There's multiple classes of that, so I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, we get into all kinds of classes of.
But 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 none of them have come here. I think that what he's suggesting is they would have to come here and make their case and we'd have to make a decision.
Right, and none of them will get turned up. You wanna see a crystal ball? None of them will get turned down.
Upon the recommendation of the liquor commission.
So basically, yeah, I would be giving you, yeah. I I actually think uh these points are all valid. Uh I'm glad we're having this discussion. I do really think that something of this magnitude that changes it potentially the face of the community needs to be discussed with the public. So I think before we entertain a a a very direct motion on that. I think we should entertain uh the the public in this discussion. And help explain what's going on. I mean, uh lots of people are well aware that businesses such as bars and restaurants really took a hit during the pandemic, having to be shut down, having to operate at few, less capacity, all of those things. It is an opportunity for the public to hear from businesses um and understand as well as for the businesses to hear from the public who might not agree, as some of our councilmen don't agree, with gaming in general. Um and things like that. I think it could lead to a very good community conversation about this topic. So if we could in tandem organize our thoughts on the information, the data we've gotten. Um have more data, more feedback from the public and then also be able to speak clearly the next time we need to to talk through this. Um to get to the ordinance or enforcement language that we really want, I think that might be a smart way to go. Mister Went.
I I don't disagree with that. It's it's good but uh to get the uh the public input. But this has been going on for quite a while. There's there's a number of businesses that are coming out of the pandemic that have asked and just basically have been told, no, that there's no option for you. I uh appreciate Alderman Timmy's uh idea as a interim step. We'll certainly get public uh input. If somebody makes an application and it's on the uh uh the the council, people can post it. And if you don't agree with it, get people to speak out against it. And and if you do, then for it, uh whatever. But uh so I guess I would like to uh piggybacking on what Alderman Timmy had said is uh direct staff to um uh put together um whatever we need for an application process for those that uh currently are not eligible to uh make application to uh the council for for review.
I'll second that.
So motion by Alderman, Went seconded by Alderman, Timmy, any further discussion? Timmy.
Uh based on our current ordinances, would this require an ordinance change?
I I don't know.
Yeah, because it it is kind of weird and oddly in the moment, so we probably have to just.
Well, I think to um implement your suggestion, Alderman. We would raise the cap on gaming licenses, not class K. Well, including class K.
We're talking about the uh the licenses outside of class K.
Right, but what your thirty now includes class K. So that would still be limited to five.
Via the liquor license.
So we would increase your total to thirty six, which is the current number and then include the ability to apply for an in increase in that cap effectively.
Yeah, we need that language to be clear to that process. So that's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Mister Moyer, I can't tell if you have a hand raised at all. Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Brian.
Nay.
Waldron.
Nay.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Um to to follow up that discussion, I I will work on the public input, how we can organize that. And after I have more details from everyone. It'd be more of the informational, we can talk through that, but.
Okay.
Mister, Miss Christopoulos.
So my final question is the number of terminals in each establishment. Do you have thoughts on increasing that to six or changing that?
All right, hang on, I've seen multiple hands. We'll come back to answer your question. Um yes, Mister Schmidt.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion for staff to include in the gambling recommendation, raising the machines at a given site to six.
Discussion? Uh sorry, that was motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Williams. Discussion, Mister Went.
Um yeah, I I I don't think I have a huge problem with that as long as we have the the ability uh to um to increase the numbers and I think we've we've addressed that. Honestly, if 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 our concerns is the proliferation of these things, the difference between five and six, I think probably gets a little bit more gaudy, but I've got a motion after this that uh might help with it.
Yeah, and and my thought is when they're, when the machines are on the site, I don't think adding that sixth machine makes a impact to the visual impact or or how that works. And if someone wants to bring that sixth machine in, I think that's a a simple thing we can allow.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nay.
Waldron.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Uh that motion passes. Mister Went.
I'd like to make an amendment to our fee structure that the terminal owner um fee be increased from, I believe it's twelve hundred dollars currently to um uh eighteen hundred dollars.
Did you also have a operator fee one or not?
No, so.
Just the terminal owner.
Start with it. So this is the terminal owner. This is the person who lives out of city, out of state that keeps coming in here and uh putting more and more machines in in our community and getting a fair chunk of the revenue and taking it home with them.
All right, motion by Alderman Went, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mister O'Brien. Discussion, Mister Waldron.
I actually support this one. Anytime we can penalize anybody, I'm all for it, but.
There's officially not the reason we're passing this.
And that's kinda my question. In the past, we've been told that if we're going to set a uh fee or a rate or something, it had to be a logical conclusion to do it. In other words, you just couldn't raise something if it, you're just looking to make a profit. Is, and I'm for this, but does this smack of that, we're just raising it to an arbitrary number? We don't have any costs, we don't have any burden, we just wanna punish the outside guy.
It's a burden to our community. Well, if it's a burden to our community, we shouldn't have it.
Miss Christopoulos.
I don't know the answer to that, but we will explore that.
Thank you.
I, hang on one sec. I do know, I tried to do a little bit of research and and I think there are trends in this direction because municipalities do uh feel the need to capture that growth in their business. Um but I don't have the details on that. Mister Went.
Yeah, there there has been, in fact, the municipal minute uh talked about it. I'll 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 find it. But um but this was a couple of years ago. There was a case that uh that came back that allowed for, I think it was maybe cause we went from a thousand to twelve hundred um based on that. And there didn't seem to be any uh language in the um uh decision saying that there was a limit on on this. Cause clearly gambling is taking funds out of the uh the community. There is a um uh a correlation to that. And so uh uh I I think that this is the the right number for this year. We'll 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 maybe revisit next year, but.
So what I'm saying is I will draft this and look into.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Regarding the fee structure, um is this the I guess I'm just gonna, this is the only fee structure available or if we could, if.
I've got it.
Well, my, well, I guess my question is, is should it be a flat fee as opposed to a percentage? Or what what's the the legal reason why we would go one route versus the other?
Well, I I believe the percentage would be less defensible.
Isn't it just, so isn't it just entertainment consumption? We we tax every time someone buys a ticket to the TaxSlayer Center.
It's under amusement tax.
So would we not be able to apply that similar principle?
Maybe you can. I mean, I'm saying that, I'm not really sure about the law on this, but I'm happy to look at it. I am. I'll I'll bring you that answer.
So the motion on the table is to increase the op owner uh fee to eighteen hundred dollars. Mister Went.
Yeah, actually, um alright, H, well, thi- this is a um municipal minute that just came out.
Yeah.
This week.
New legislation.
And so this was the new legislation. So so actually, we maybe need to have a little bit more discussion on this because because there was no limit on it, this new legislation did come up and did say uh local governments um that says the fee imposed on home rule and non-home rule units by local governments must be shared equally between the gaming terminal operator and the licensed establishment with the terminal is operated. So that is a new thing that came in. I don't know if the governor signed it, but that was HB thirty one thirty six. So what I'd like to do is, i- if you can do a research on that, whether that was passed and and signed by the governor. But I'd also like you to to look up to see if uh there's the ability that we could give a credit to the operator for um uh food and uh beverage tax paid to the community. So we may make this fee you know, three thousand dollars and it's split equally fifteen hundred for the terminal operator and fifteen hundred for the uh um the uh the restaurant or the bar, but they get credit for the um uh food and beverage tax that they pay in. So if they're a real restaurant and and then they won't pay anything, so. Does that make sense, Margaret?
Yes.
Is that?
That's an amendment to my motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that amendment.
All right, that's motion amendment by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timmy. Discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you. That motion passes. Now we are back to the original motion on the fee. Eighteen hundred to explore that.
Yeah.
Come back with the information. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion passes.
Thank goodness for the municipal minute.
All right. Alright, I I think we are at a stopping point with this, the conversation on this topic. Obviously, we're coming back to it in one form or another. So thank you for that good work. Um, any further public comment? Don't see any, so we will close out the committee of the whole and move to our regular council meeting.
To our, yes, in the public hearings first.
Yes, call to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Williams, do you have an invocation?
No, I don't.
Roll call please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Alderman Messias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Okay, our first item of business is our public hearing on the twenty twenty-two budget. I hereby open this twenty twenty-two budget hearing. Ms. Barnes, please proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you say, um, we are now conducting our public hearing on the proposed twenty-two budget.
I'll say at eight eleven PM, just so we're clear.
Thank you. Yes, that is exactly right.
These don't seem to want to work.
There you go.
So, the Illinois state statute requires that the city conduct a public hearing to obtain taxpayer comments prior to the adoption of the budget. The public hearing notice was published in the Dispatch Rock Island Artist Newspaper on Friday, November the fifth. The budget document is available for public inspection on the city's website as well as in the finance office. During the budget process, department directors met with staff to determine budgetary needs. Proposed departmental budgets reviewed were then reviewed by the city administrator and the finance director. The city administrator then presented a balanced budget proposal to city council for their consideration and approval. Budget work sessions were held on Saturday, October the twenty-third, as well as the committee of the whole on October twenty-sixth and November second. The total budget as presented is balanced at a hundred and forty-seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars. And that includes the amended appropriation ordinance that we discussed earlier tonight. Net of transfers, police and fire pensions, our ARPA funds and internal service funds, the net budget totals a hundred million, eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The budget as proposed funds all existing city services, no increase in utility fees. It maintains healthy fund balances and cash reserves, and it aligns with the council's strategic plan and three pillars. The budget as proposed decreases property taxes by five hundred thousand from the two thousand and twenty-one current budget. Tax relief after two difficult years from the COVID nineteen pandemic is part of the reason for that decrease in the property taxes. The EAV increased one point one five percent from seven hundred and eighty-three million dollars up to seven hundred and ninety-two million. Property taxes, as we said above, decreased from fifteen million, eight hundred and six thousand in twenty-one, down to fifteen million, three hundred and six thousand, proposed for twenty-two. This will be an average decrease of three point two percent across all property taxes. Again, that is an average. The levy rate as projected um, will decrease from the two dollars, one cent, seven, seven, zero, down to a dollar, nine, three, one, seventy-one. The impact on a five hundred thou- oops, I skipped one. Impact on a hundred thousand dollar residential home from the current taxes they are paying in twenty-one will be a reduction of fifteen dollars or approximately two point seven percent. And the impact on a five hundred thousand dollar commercial property will be a hundred and twenty-one reduction or three point six. Again, the difference is because of the average and um, as you recall, residential property actually increased on the average one point three nine percent citywide, and commercial property increased an average of point six eight. So that is the difference in the reduction amount. In addition, um, the property tax reduction helps um, re- I'm sorry, it's not the reductions. Um, the property taxes as proposed help restore property tax allocations to both the library and the parks budgets that have been reduced over the last five years. And those allocations to the library and parks have increased, and that is being realized because of the anticipated savings from the pension obligation bonds.
Mister Went.
Yeah, and ju- just for clarification, that the uh, property tax allocations, they were getting squeezed out the the library and the park because the pension portion was becoming such a larger percentage of the property taxes. It was backfilled by uh, general fund uh, transfers, but uh, that's one of the reasons why doing this pension obligation allowed us to uh, realize some some savings in the property taxes and being able to get more to the library and parks.
Please continue.
New personnel as proposed in the budget for twenty-two totals one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one fifty-nine. It funds a full year of six new public works laborers and motor equipment operators that the council approved um, earlier this fall. As we talked earlier tonight, it funds assistant city administrators. It also funds seven new positions in economic development, as well as in water and dub- water and WPC with staggered hiring dates throughout the year. And from the last count that I had gotten from Leah, um, it does fund forty-six vacant positions citywide. It funds all authorized, budget as proposed funds all authorized positions approved by council. On the capital, um, CIP side, the budget does include twenty-seven million dollars for capital improvements and capital equipment. And I looked back and it is one of the highest years um, for budgetary purposes for capital and as well as equipment. Infrastructure projects total in excess of seventeen million dollars across all funds. And capital equipment tot- totals just shy of ten million dollars, and it includes new vehicles, including a new fire pumper for two and a half million, as well as WPC for about four and a half million dollars for the design for south slope improvements. In addition, we're getting a new soccer and basketball courts at Stevens Park for six hundred and fifty-one thousand, almost six hundred and fifty-two thousand, and it does fund the first construction year for our new riverside pool and tennis courts, um, which we are bonding for in conjunction with paying cash reserves at seven point one million dollars. As you all know, everyone worked very, very hard over the last few months on strategic planning, and for two thousand and twenty-two, we have over ten million dollars allocated out of ARPA funds for the community. We also have allocated one-time expenditures of one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to support our strategic plan. Various funding across all funds, just for some highlights, the council increased funding to enhance leaf pickup as well as snow removal in the public works department. In police and fire, we have additional money for training, public safety equipment, and a new record management system. We also have a new citywide classification and compensation study being budgeted. The budget allows for all seasonal positions to be funded, including minimum wage increases, and this is largely in the public works and parks departments. We also reinstated sending hours at the library effective January of twenty-two. It increases the annual material collection at the library to three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And it's been several years since it's been that level. It also funds three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for ash tree removal, and you will see comparable funding in the next three-year budgets as being proposed. Overall, the expenditures um, for the two thousand and twenty-two budget goes across fifty-eight funds, and they are broken down within those categories in front of you. There are two columns. One of them, the first column there shows appropriations that were published, as we discussed earlier tonight, to the tune of a hundred and forty-six million. The one we are looking at now is the amended annual appropriation that increases expenditures in the general fund, six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And the total um, appropriations to adopt is one hundred and forty-seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and three dollars. A look at the property tax levies and to see how they are broken down, we are reinstating a debt service levy rate as a result of issuing the pension obligation bonds. The projection for those, again, we're issuing the bonds tomorrow, so these numbers will change, but we're estimating five million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in annual debt service, and those are pretty level payments um, across all of the twenty years. We also have levies for our fire pension and police pension, as well as the park fund. And I've got a little footnote down there. The parks fund levy is one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, and due to the reduction in property tax levy that we just discussed, it will require an additional transfer from the general fund for the six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars um, to balance their budget. The public library is going to receive over three million dollars in property taxes. And then you'll see our SSAs five and six, and those are the same levy amounts that we have had um, over the last several years, quite a few years. And now our last two slides, it's just a summary of where our money comes from. And up at the very top, you'll see the property taxes is fifteen million, three hundred and six thousand dollars. That is not our largest revenue stream. Our largest revenue streams are intergovernmental revenue, which makes up twenty-one percent of the budget. And that is federal and state money. It's all of our income tax, our replacement credits, um, and all those types of revenues as well, as well as ARPA, but we've got that broken down separately. Property taxes actually only make up ten percent of our revenue stream. And we are very fortunate, and I talked about this with Moody's, that is one of the things that helped us through with COVID nineteen, that we don't have all of our eggs in one basket when it comes to revenues. We are well diversified. And the total amount of gross revenues is a hundred and forty-seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand. And the net revenues, net of all the transfers, is one hundred million, eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five. On the expenditure side, again, we are proposing a balanced budget, and our primary expenditures are in public safety. Public safety makes up over nineteen percent of our entire operating budget, followed by all of our business-type enterprise funds, which is the water, sewer, stormwater, and sanitation funds. And again, gross expenditures, a hundred and forty-seven million, and the net expenditures are a hundred million. And with that, with that, um, our final items for council adoption will be on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mister Went.
Yeah, can you go back one slide? Just a quick question. The debt service is seven percent.
Yeah.
And then the police and fire pension at eight percent? Is the pension obligation bonds in that seven percent, or is that
No.
Only in the eight?
No, the debt is, the, the debt obligations are in the debt service.
Okay.
Yeah, the pension is the remaining amount.
Okay, so it's really closer to, when you're talking about what our pension amount is, it's probably closer to fourteen percent?
Yeah, it from governmental, it would mean it does have to flow through our debt service fund.
So, eh, eh, yeah.
Proportion. It's it's a larger chunk of the pie.
If if that could be noted someplace, I I think that that's important for for people to know, because
In a future footnote. Mister Timian.
Uh, the estimated payment on the obligation bonds, what percentage did you base that on? Was it at the three-five, or?
No, that was, I think it was just shy of the three percent.
Okay.
So if we come under, that number should be better.
She had said two point eight five there earlier tonight.
And well, and when they ran the bonds, it was just shy of the three percent, the last bond.
Is there any testimony from those in favor of the budget as presented? Is there any testimony from those in opposition to the budget? Other questions or statements? Hearing none, this budget is clo- hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Carol. Great job.
So we move to our consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the city of Moline, Illinois for the tax levy year twenty twenty-one, collectible in year twenty twenty-two, and enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois, special service area number five of the city of Moline, Illinois. Council Bill thirty thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois, special service area number six of the city of Moline, Illinois. Resolutions. Council Bill twelve seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Sutfin Corporation of Dublin, Ohio for the purchase of two custom chassis by, I'm sorry, F-nine fire pumpers utilizing Sourcewell contract number zero two two eight one eight dash S U T for the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Council Bill twelve eighteen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the human resources director to execute a policy with United Healthcare to provide an employer group waiver plan for Medicare retiree prescription drug benefit coverage for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Council Bills twelve nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement with Navitas Health Solutions LLC for pharmacy benefit management services for a two-year period commencing on January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Council Bill twelve twenty dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the human resources director to execute an attest to a policy with United Healthcare BP to provide reinsurance coverage for medical and prescription drug benefit claims for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Council Bill twelve twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with UMR Incorporated to provide administrative services for medical and prescription drug benefit claims and administrative services for dental, vision, and flexible claims for a two-year period commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Council Bill twelve, twelve twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amended agreement with Mission Square Retirement to include changes to retiree benefit, I'm sorry, retiree health insurance benefits implemented for APSVI employees hired on or before January first, two thousand and twenty. Council Bill twelve twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an addendum to the intergovernmental agreement for the estimated ten-year ongoing maintenance costs of the integrated P twenty-five emergency radio tower system in Rock Island County, Illinois, and authorizing all appropriate city of Moline officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each to complete each, each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to the addendum. Council Bill twelve twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement with U S I Insurance for brokerage services for liability, property, workers' compensation, and underground storage tank insurance for a period of one year commencing on December first, two thousand and twenty-one, and authorizing the human resources director to execute any and all documents in order to bind and accept coverage with Insurance Program Managers Group, I P M G, for liability, property, and workers' compensation insurance and American Insurance Company for underground storage tank coverage for a period of one year commencing on December first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Elderman Went, second by Elderman Timian. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's? And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, as amended, an ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Council Bill forty oh eight dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance requesting the county clerk not to extend twenty twenty-one taxes for payment of principal and interest for the general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty-ten A refunding, general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty-eleven B refunding, general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty-twelve H refunding, general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty-sixteen refunding, taxable general obligation refunding bond series twenty-twenty A and general obligation refunding bonds series twenty-twenty B, general obligation corporation, corporate purpose bonds, series twenty-twenty-one A refunding, general obligation corporate bond series twenty-twenty-one B refunding, general obligation corporate bond series twenty-twenty-one D. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Laney's business? Mr. Williams?
Um, your honor, the invocation tonight could have been just thanking God for Carol Barnes to come down from heaven and, uh, a magic here for us, and just can't thank you enough, Carol.
Mr. Messias?
Um, yes, I had a chance to go out, um, last weekend to the Holiday Hop, and Moline was alive. It was great to see a lot of people out. I actually didn't get a chance to go to a lot of the places that I wanted to, because it was just so packed. So, uh, we, we ended up at Lopais, and sure enough, everybody ended up coming in there at some point, but, uh, I, I commend, uh, Moline Center, Jeff Manis, and everybody else from the visiting facilities who helped put that together. I mean, uh, it, it wa- I was taken back at how crowded and how alive the downtown was, so just wanted to share.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
That, that is awesome, and I, and I offered Jeff that if he wanted to shave, you know, in the back of my head, I, I'd volunteer, but I don't think anybody wants to see that. Uh, but to piggyback on that, this Saturday, um, is lighting on the commons. So, uh, make sure that everybody knows about that, but from three-thirty to, uh, six. And there is going to be double the fireworks this year, so, um, make sure you, you get out to that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to touch base, I know, you know, last week we had kind of an update on what was going on with, uh, broadband and, and those sorts of things. And I know we had talked several months ago, because this is something that the community has had a lot of interest in and what's going on, and we keep getting, uh, calls and, and conversations about. Since we've got a game plan now moving forward, um, can we finally maybe get that press release out that we've been talking about getting out for, for months? Just, I think that it would be good to ke- have a communication to the public of where we're at and what's going on.
Sure, we can do that, I can talk to Tori and we can put something out there.
Okay, that'd be terrific.
If it, if it helps alleviate phone calls, absolutely.
All right.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Timian?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, your honor.
Stern, hold true.
Sadly, I have a couple items. First one is, uh, Rock Island Waste Management Agency, my favorite committee that I'm on. Just an update on the drop-off recycling. Been a couple developments, I think I told you before that Silvis was gonna contemplate going with their apartment complexes and see if they wanted to put in, uh, uh, recycling facilities that there is. And it was, uh, as the gentleman told me from Silvis, the representative, it wasn't a no, it was a H no. So there was no interest on the apartment owners to do that in Silvis. Uh, the reasoning was, is that they've been down that road before, they turn into a mess, people dump on the sites, very familiar stuff that we already know from our sites. Uh, Silvis then is going to, uh, contemplate, they're pretty sure they're gonna do it, they've got a little site inside their public works yard, where they're going to get a container from Republic Services and, uh, have the community come in from Silvis. I don't know how they're gonna manage that, but from Silvis, and utilize that to, uh, drop off the recyclables. It will be closed at night on the weekends, so it'll only be something from, uh, the hours that Public Works is open. So a lot of people recycle on the weekends, and I don't know how beneficial that will be to working folks. But Silvis is gonna try that, and we're gonna watch to see how that proceeds there in Silvis. For the greater good, uh, by-state staff, who are the staff people for Recuma, are working and talking to vendors about potential for, uh, recycling, moving forward, what are we gonna do? Especially out in the rural areas, most of the discontent has come from the rural areas, not necessarily the folks in town who have chances to curbside, but the rural areas have been very quite vocal, and they're working on that. We should see something out of them for the ne- I would say in the next month or two. And, uh, finally, the city of Rock Island has stepped up and offered their site. If something happens in the future, they would allow their site to be used. They will not maintain it, they will not, uh, do anything with it, but they will allow the site to be used. So that is something new, uh, from the Rock Island, no financial commitment from them at this point, but they would allow their site to be used in the future. And that, that's my update.
Thank you very much.
My last item, your honor, is keep in mind our discussion tonight on alcohol, video gaming, and all that, because it's gonna come back to roost or haunt us again when we get to cannabis. We've opened the door from cannabis, whether I wanted it opened or not, it's opened, but you can see what has happened with video gaming. So keep that in mind as we've opened that door for cannabis, that a lot of these same issues that you're facing right now are gonna come to haunt us in the near future when that actually gets up and running. So that was my two cents worth.
Thank you, your honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, your honor.
Okay, I don't have much, but I do need to touch base with Mayor Pro Tama, there's an event this Friday that, that's you.
I'll be in Houston.
Okay, well then I'll open it up to any of you. Um, the Mississippi River and Cities and Towns Initiative, I've told you about their plastic pollution initiative. Um, their results are going to be released this Friday on a Zoom call. And I need someone to be on that Zoom call.
What time is it?
Nine A.
I can do it.
All right, Mr. O'Brien, I'll send you the link, we'll be our representative. Great. Um, sir, if you test, anything?
Yeah, just a few, a couple brief things. Just a reminder for everybody, the I seventy-four ceremony is still scheduled for December first, and I believe you should all be receiving an in- uh, individual invitation to your email address. But it is still scheduled for December first, and, uh, police chief and the fire chief, and our interpublic works director, myself, we've all been engaged in conversations about the planning for the event, and it's going to be a major event. And there'll be a lot of, uh, police presence, I'm assuming, and ambulances and buses providing transportation, so, um, as things unfold, we'll, we'll bring you more up to date, but, you know, if you don't receive an invitation, let me know, and I'll make sure that you do have the details as to what's taking place and when. Yes?
Is this separate from the one P M, um, thing they're having for everyone?
It's in the morning, there's a breakfast in the morning, you'll all be invited to over at the Tax Layer Center. Once the breakfast is over, then you'll be shuttled, you know, because they will not let people drive cars. They will actually shuttle you by, by metro link, uh, buses up to the bridge, dress warm. I'll forewarn you, we don't know what weather we're gonna have, so we can't predict. Could be a beautiful sunny day, it could be, you know, forty mile or gusts up there, I don't know. I, uh, suggest that you just dress accordingly, right? Uh, then following the ceremony, which will take place, and I believe there's, uh, both governors, the governors from Iowa and Illinois will both have remarks, the mayor of Bettendorf, Mayor Moline, will have remarks. I think if the weather's bad, they'll keep remarks brief, you know, we hope. And then, um, then following the event, the public will have an opportunity to actually go up on the bridge for, for some period of time, uh, following which there is a, uh, kind of the closing ceremony, the celebration that takes place over on the, uh, on the Bettendorf side at about two-thirty. So you'll be able to get warmed up over there with a hot toddy or something, depending on the weather. At least that's what Decker promises.
He'll, he'll keep you.
Oh, yeah. Um, roundtable topics, just so you know, I had brought that up at the previous meeting, thinking that that would be really great for this council. I did speak with the, uh, department directors today, and have asked them that by the end of the month, I'd like to have from them very specific topics that they think are apropos for the council to, and, uh, basically learn about, get educated on, and have deliberations about. I mean, just important, important topics going forward. And then once I have those topics, I'm gonna share those with you. And then if you have anything that's missing that you would like to talk about, we'll add that to the list. And then we'll come up with kind of a, a plan going forward as to how to broach these subjects, you know, each and every month going forward into the next, uh, next fiscal year. I just mentioned the cannabis stores are alive and well. Uh, we have been contacted, uh, by more than one at this point. And, uh, don't have a lot of details, but they are definitely, uh, limited by the licenses that the state provides. Um, and then one licensee that we spoke with last week, actually, is looking at a, uh, location on the avenue of the cities. And that's all I really know at this point on that, no further detail. I can say, though, that the, uh, city of Mylan actually produced about seven hundred thousand in revenue off of their one store, uh, for the prior year. Just to give you an idea of the value, and that's that. I'll wait for executive session.
Yes. Executive session, please.
Your honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five I L C S one-twenty slash two C one.
Second.
Motion by Elderman Williams, seconded by Elderman Went. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Messias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's?
Motion passes, we will move to closed session.